I'll be serving as Presiding Officer, basically Traffic Cop this morning. But before we kick off our morning session, I believe we have a pre-GAVL presentation. And why don't I hand the floor over to Commissioner Ryan to introduce this important item?
Thank you, President Maps. I appreciate that. Good morning and thank you for joining us for this very special pre-GAVL presentation. A few, couple of weeks ago, last month, I led a delegation with our Portland Kaohsiung Sister City Association. And just let me tell you that Kaohsiung, Kaohsiung takes their international relationships very seriously. And it really showed. Our delegation was met with warmth, with kindness and utmost respect from the moment we landed in Taiwan, until the moment we departed, until the moment we actually arrived in Portland. It felt like it just was, it was all the way through. Kaohsiung, Taiwan, if you don't know, it's a very beautiful city. It's carefully planned for families and children to live and play. It's also the largest city in southern Taiwan. Its population, what's their population?
Two point seven, two point seven million.
Two point, yeah, two point seven, two point eight million.
Around three million in the area, yeah. It's a very large city and really has a global presence. We were taken by so many things and our guests will tell you more about it. But the grass-lined street car circuit provides heat relief and wastewater management. There are countless numbers of parks next to schools. And they offer so much fun and engagement. And all of their urban design has been so mindful of families. So when they do an urban design, there's always a play element to it. So there wasn't a place we went where we didn't see multi-generations being together, playing together. And that was something that I know we want for our city as well. And their streets were definitely crowded with outdoor events. Art is a priority, of course, it was in the middle of the Lantern Festival, towards the end of the Lunar New Year celebration. So we were also there at a very festive time. We saw very, the people were what was special. And I want you to hear more about this trip. And so it's my honor to introduce Chi Chao Chen. He's the Honorable President of the Portland Kaohsiung Sister City Association and the organizer, keeper of all the tickets, the itineraries. Chi, you really herded the cats very well. We just always did whatever Chi told us to do. And for the most part, we were on time. I might have gotten the tardy award, shocking. But it was really great that you just kept us on task. And I also want to add before you speak that the group that went was very multicultural, multi-generational, and it felt really good. There was, no one was leading by ego, we were really one team. And we were there to be with and in relationship with our host in Kaohsiung and then in Taipei. Chi, good morning, it's great to see you. Since you came back a week after me, you're probably feeling like I did last Wednesday.
Yeah, still a little bit of jet lag.
Yeah, so anyway, welcome, so good to have you here. And I know that we have some slides as well, and you'll introduce the guest.
Yeah, my name is Chi Chao Chen, the President of the Portland Kaohsiung Sister City Association. It's, I'm gracious to be invited here to give you a trip report of this incredible goodwill delegation visit to Kaohsiung and Taipei for the duration from February 16th to 24th realities. So we spent about six days in Taiwan. And PKSTA is sponsored, a dragon boat race, and also responsible for bringing the current eight beautiful dragon boats we brought away from Kaohsiung, Taiwan. As a matter of fact, this day boat was actually the second generation. Here we already retired for the 25 years, 25 years of service of our first generation boats. And including the one that you guys probably seen permanently displayed on the east wall of the convention center that was donated by Kaohsiung City Governments too. And for nearly 30 years, Poland has enjoyed sister city relationship with Kaohsiung, Taiwan. Since 1988, the Sisterhood Relationship Treaty was signed by late Mayor Bart Clark and Mayor Suna Chen of the Kaohsiung Cities. This year, for the first time since 2009, of then Mayor Sam Adams lead the delegation to visit Kaohsiung for almost 15 years. Waiting, we were thrilled to have an elected official representative from the city of Poland, Commissioner Ryan, join us on this very special annual sister city goodwill visits to Kaohsiung. Yeah, we were there, the entire delegation was led by Commissioner Ryan, from member, from city hall official, and Rose, the team from Rose Festival, including the mayor, Deja, the fifth water, Queen of the 2023 Rose Festival, and several members from the Portland Kaohsiung Sister City Association, travel from Portland to Kaohsiung for their annual lunar festival year celebrations. Okay, as Commissioner Ryan said, we were, we've been received from the moment we arrive in the high-speed rail station. They were greeting us from the city official was there particularly. And, and till the moment that we left, waving their hand towards us, the, at the station's platform, that was very warm welcome all the way for the four days visit there. And then the Speaker Kong of the council and the Deputy Mayor Lo was actually spent a lot of time. I tell you, it makes a whole lot of difference when we, when we packed with the elected city official, in this case, Commissioner Ryan is be with us. We certainly see the difference between the past visit and this year's visit. And Speaker Kong especially pulled me on the side and say, hey, you guys are special friends to us, okay? We've always been the largest contingent of the delegation among all the sister cities to visit Kaohsiung during that one week Lantern Festival celebration. And by being the largest, we receive most of the, most of the media's attention, most of the picture taken, and of course, all this banquet and so forth. You know, food, they obviously, they claim they offer the best Chinese gourmet foods over there, but obviously, we have a lot of things that we observe over there. And we'd like to bring it back and report to the council in terms of the lessons learned and things that like Commissioner Ryan already indicated. And we visit during, during the four days trips in Kaohsiung, we've also visited a student high school where they hosted a special assembly showcasing the talents of their students. Some of them, some of those students will be here in Portland June to participate our annual Rose Festival Grand Tour Parade. And I'll tell you, after Commissioner Ryan gave a very inspirational speech to the student. Afterwards, both Commissioner and the Queen Deja has this, I call it the Taylor Swift moment, okay? It was mobbed by a whole bunch of screaming students, you know, grabbing, taking selfies and group photos, and then, you know, that was incredible. Yeah, that was really incredible. That tells them, that tell us, yeah, the students would very like to see us paying a visit, even though we do that every year. But I tell you, with the Queen of the Rose Festival and Commissioner there certainly make a whole lot of difference. And we also have the opportunity to visit some of, some of the, you know, deep sea ocean fishery group of Lonsund conglomerate. They also have the Oregon's connection, they opened up the Folly automated fish processing plant in Australia, Oregon. They obviously invite us to visit, pay them a visit during those festivals, you know, period. And I'd like to elaborate a little bit on the transformation of Kaohsiung in the past two decades. Yeah, the Kaohsiung has transferred from a heavy chemical petroleum industrial city into a very green and I call it the very infrastructure smart city. During this past two decades, you know, personally, I had that experience, because I tell you, I was the ROTC officer. I had my three months, three month, the so-called boot camp training right in one of the, one of the city visits called Camp Wei Wu, Wei Wuing. And then, when I remember back to, that was about 44 years ago, I was a new army recruit, having my three months training. I was dying, I wish the drill sergeant gave me a few minutes break so I can take a breath under the shadow of the cluster of the banyan tree. Now, 44 years later, I visit the same place. And then the banyan trees, cluster of banyans is still there, but I see no so-called the individual comeback training values there anymore. I don't see the, you know, the rifle talking, target shooting ranges anymore. All I see is a beautiful state of the spaceship-like, a white structure housing, an opera house, housing a music, a music hall, housing a performance art theater. Those were the state of our desire, water war acoustic material and those bright, bright shining breasts, you know, pipe organs. And you see the effort that, you can feel the effort that Kaohsiung has made in the past ten, in the duration of the past 10 or 20 years. Like Commissioner mentioned, from the grass-lined street court to a rotating pedestrian, pedestrian bridge, Kaohsiung offers countless event and family friendlies, infrastructures to improve the life of their citizens. They seem to, you know, we bring to the night market, we bring to the, even the department store. They seem to offer a common themes of the traditional family value. And they are promoting from the very beginning, the parents and child's relationship. I can certainly make us kind of dig deep in thinking, oh, and I would like to think about the contracts between us and them. And so that's, that's kind of the observation I would like to bring back to the city in terms of what we observed over in Kaohsiung. We spent our last two days, the visits, their capital city of Taipei, which is the, which is more than the capital, capital city of Taiwan and also the political and the infrastructure center of the nation island. And I'm pleased to announce, the history has been made during this Google trips, Commission, with Commissioner Ryan and delegation, we have conducted our first visit, official visit between the city of Poland and the city of Taipei. And by visits there, Taipei City Governments and as far as the city hall. And it was warmly welcomed by the Deputy Mayor Wang Yifan and the Council Speaker, Mr. Dai Shi Qing. And the common message from them, other than give us, give us the extreme welcome, the common message or the questions they ask is, I know you guys come here often. Why, what took you so long to finally pay us a visit? I'm telling you, I certainly take advantage, after 15 years waiting, I finally take advantage of Commissioner Ryan's being with us and initiate this, this major brainstorm to kind of break the ice between, between the city of Portland and the city of Taipei. And establishing this relationship is one of the most important Pacific Ring neighbors, has the potential for the culture and economic partnership. Our city has overlapped important industries such as flowers. Taipei has been a proudly, has been the award, they call it the World Floral Expo back in 2010 and 2011, the last part of the year. So they have a whole bunch of flower, flower garden. Their city flowers, Rhododendrons, and they certainly have done their homework on Portland. When we have visit, in between Deputy Mayor and the Speaker, and Speaker Tai, they mentioned about our, the fully aware of our city of the roses. They are, we have our, you know, election of the Queen of the Rosaria. They know about our NBA team, Trail Blazers. And they also know that Trail Blazers is not doing too hot this year too. So it's one of the things that I observed. And so establishing this relationship is with Taipei, certainly was the message I want to bring back. As a matter of fact, after we concluded the visit of the, this Google delegation visit, a few of us stayed put in Taipei for a few days. We got a special invitation by the Deputy Mayor, so Wang Yifan took us to her office for a short 30-minute visit. During the visit, she kind of sincerely indicated that she liked to see this newly formed relationships to be taken to the next level. She said she anticipated for the future dialogue between our mayor, Mayor Willa, and their mayor, Mr. Jiang Wan Young, to have a further conversation or exchange. And she said, well, you, you have, Poland has roses, we got Rhododendrons, and that seems to be the common ground that we'd be able to initiate, initiate the visit between the two cities. Maybe not this year, certainly we anticipate it next year if something happens. And so this is the thing that I would like to, the message I would like to bring back to the city council. Lastly, you know, before I conclude my, my trip report, I'd like to introduce my two fellow delegation members, Rachel Burlington from International Rose Test Garden and Cheeto Delaueo of the City Hall International Relations Office, to give us a brief remarks about their observation and impressions of this particular Taiwanese visit. Thank you.
I'll go ahead, I'll try to be brief, although it's hard to be in such a rich trip. My name is Rachel Burlington, thank you council for hearing us. Thank you Commissioner Ryan for representing us at this delegation trip. My name is Rachel Burlington, curator of the International Rose Test Garden. I got connected to the Sister City Association through our bed dedication program at the Rose Garden. Kaohsiung is the sixth of our sister cities to have a bed dedicated along the promenade. And this is how I know Cheeto, because we work together in that program. So it's been great to know her through that and through this delegation. Again, I'm honored to represent the council, excuse me, represent the city of Portland for this delegation trip. Three quick impressions, the first one is everyone was so warm, everyone was so friendly and willing to share their experience in local government. And I think what was wonderful is they were equally as curious about Portland. So I feel like mutual curiosity towards each other is our foundation for a strong relationship. So that was one thing that stuck out to me. My second observation, I want to echo what Commissioner Ryan said. I work in vibrant communities and I was really impressed in how they planned for their climate resiliency. They were planting trees, mature trees that were climate adaptive and also withstand the monsoon season. And the highlight, kind of nerdy, but the highlight was seeing all that green black grass in between the rail lines. Kaohsiung is tropical climate and they have their concentration of rainfall, three to four months of the, of the year, so a lot of rainfall. So it's really cool to be reminded that we can be creative in how we plan for our cities and our environmental conditions. And then lastly, we went to Taipei, which is the city of Rhododendron, just like Chi said. I had no idea they had such an comprehensive, amazing rose garden. And they're blooming in March, so they're a little bit earlier than we are. And they also developed a comprehensive guide to showcase where you can view flowers throughout the city. So this is just a wonderful example of how to create excitement in your local community and also encourage tourism. So I just want to say thank you again for letting me represent the city of Portland and I hope I did the city proud.
You sure did, I want to pause here, I noticed that the mayor has his hand up. Mr. Mayor, do you have an announcement or statement you want to make?
Just, just a brief comment. Chi, thank you for the presentation, Commissioner Ryan, thank you for representing us. I'm very, very glad that you went and did that. I just want to tell people, I'm not blowing off our sister city partnerships. I will be honest with you, for the last several years, we have been under various states of emergency and I have not found it necessarily the right time for me to reconnect with our sister cities overseas, there's a lot going on here. So I support the idea, first of all, of other commissioners going and representing our city at these events. I know that culturally, they're very, very important, particularly with our Asian partners, but not exclusively. I am hopeful that towards the end of my term, I'll have more of an opportunity to reconnect the mayor's office with some of our sister cities. But I didn't want you to think I was not taking the charge seriously, I am. We've just had significant priorities here at home that have required my attention.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I believe we have one more speaker today. So why don't we hear from our third speaker and then we will resume our day. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner, and good morning, Mayor Commissioners. My name is Cheeto Delaueo and I have the utmost privilege of managing the sister, the Sister Cities Program, but beyond that, being the international relations manager for the city of Portland. It truly was a pleasure joining Chi as part of this delegation as well as having the Commissioner lead this delegation. You know, I must admit, I have a soft spot for sister cities. Prior to working for the city of Portland, I volunteered for one. And so I have a great respect for Portlanders who, like myself, have a connection to not just Portland, but have deep roots to other cities around the world as well. And so seeing that emulated through our sister city associations, and particularly the Portland Kaohsiung Sister City Association, is truly wonderful. This was my second visit to Kaohsiung. I last went in 2018 and echoing what Chi and Rachel, and I'm sure Commissioner Ryan has mentioned, Kaohsiung, Taiwan has truly gone through transformation in the last decade. Just in the last five years alone, the city that I went back to looked very different. And in particular, their light rail system, which early this year had been expanded and reopened and we had the opportunity to take a tour on that. And so I would like to obviously keep it short, but you know, I do want to of course highlight that, you know, Kaohsiung is one of nine sister city associations that I manage and you'll have the pleasure of perhaps seeing Chi again in the next few months at this June, as our sister cities will provide a report to council as part of their annual required reports on their programmatic activities, on, you know, what they have been up to this past year and plans for the future. This year, we happen to have a few other milestones that we are recognizing from our other associations, which includes Sapporo, Japan, as well as Bologna, Italy. And so I look forward to engaging with all your offices and helping to welcome inbound delegations that we will be receiving, as well as possible trip engagement opportunities coming up before the end of the year. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioner Ryan, I'll hand the floor back to you to round us out.
Thank you, I just wanted to acknowledge you, Chi, and Rachel, and Cheeto. It was an honor to be with all of you. You covered everything so well. I wanted to end with one thing that I recall, that both Kaohsiung and in Taipei, they had a video about what their government does. It was this really smart, elegant, brief overview of how to engage with city services. And as we go through our transformation, and we all know one of our biggest quests right now is to improve on customer service and improve on the delivery of services. I just thought it was a really smart, why haven't we thought of that? And so I'll just lift that one up. And again, thank you, Chi, for keeping us all on time and making sure that we were always appropriate in, in the gifting exchanges especially. And Cheeto, I look at you because you had to bring an extra suitcase just for all of that. And yours got there a little bit late, like half of us had late arrivals. But we all survived and we ate the best food in my entire life.
So to all the Commissioners and Mayors, there's gears towards the next years, okay? For sure, I'll do the same thing.
And finally, I want to acknowledge Jill Suede from my team, who played a big role as well. So let's give the Kaohsiung Sister City Association a round of applause.
Great. Thank you very much.
Let me get my mushroom.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Ryan, for organizing this, and we do very much appreciate hearing from our sister city. And with that, this is the March 6, 2024 morning session of the Portland City Council. Good morning, Kealan. Please call the roll.
Good morning. Rubio.
Here.
Ryan.
Yeah.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Naps.
Here.
Wheeler. Okay.
He signals with his hand.
There I am, here.
And now I'll turn it over to legal counsel for the rules of order and decorum.
Good morning. Welcome to Portland City Council. To testify before council in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance on the council agenda at www-portland.gov/council/agenda. Information on engaging with city council can be found on the council clerk's webpage. The presiding officer preserves order and decorum during city council meetings. The presiding officer determines, determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. A timer will indicate when your time is done. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If you cause a disruption, a warning will be given. Further disruption will result in ejection from the meeting. Anyone who fails to leave once ejected is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, council may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. Your testimony today should address the matter being considered. When testifying, state your name for the record; your address is not necessary. Disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. For testifiers joining virtually, please unmute yourself once the council clerk calls your name. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. First up is Communications, item 196, please.
Request of Albert Kaufman to address council regarding gas-powered leaf blowers. They canceled their request.
Okay, thank you very much. Item 197, please.
Request of David Binig to address council regarding safer infrastructure on bike routes.
Welcome, David.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm David Binig. I'm a board member of BikeCloud-PDX, but I'm here only to represent myself today. As, as, as they said, I'm here to talk about how to make our streets safer while also making better use of bureau time and resources. I'll start with a place that I know. I biked to work for years across I-84. I biked over I-84 this morning to take my daughter to preschool, so I know that, that area well. Last fall, PBOT installed concrete barriers on Northeast 21st over I-84 to separate drivers from the bike lanes. It's a good change, makes it safer, more comfortable. PBOT installed those barriers after a crash last summer. A driver crossed into the bike lane, hit a woman head-on, threw her into the air, bloodied her face on the sidewalk, and kept driving. That crash was able to happen because the bike lanes are only separated from head-on traffic by plastic posts. Some of those posts are already missing because they had been hit by previous drivers. I brought one of those posts with me today, but security very understandably asked that I leave it outside. In 2021, two years before the crash, I wrote to PBOT staff because I could see that the plastic posts separating me from head-on traffic on those bridges kept getting hit and replaced, sometimes three, four times in the same spot. And I asked if we should reconsider the kind of protection being used, given that people kept driving over them. After the crash last year, I made a records request to find out how often posts had been replaced, just on the Northeast 21st and 28th bridges. It was multiple times a year, often 10 posts at a time. At least 130 new posts within that five-year period, just on those two bridges. We knew that people kept driving over the posts into the bike lanes, and we kept just putting the posts back up. The same thing happens other places in the city, on 122nd, on Cully, on Hawthorne Biaduct. I only know the routes that I use. I don't know every other spot in the city that has the same problem. But PBOT has maintenance records of at least some of the places where those posts have been replaced, where we know they aren't doing the job of keeping drivers out of the lane. So I would ask, instead of sending crews out over and over to replace the same posts, why not have a rule, have a trigger, that when we replace plastic posts two, three, some number of times in the same location, that's a sign that we need more permanent infrastructure before someone gets hit? One final note, I think the city has sometimes been too quick to say that things are, are out of our hands, that what we really need is a change in culture, or a change at ODOT, or change from someone else. When I asked about those bridges in 2021, I was told that PBOT had limited options because ODOT wouldn't allow anything anchored into the road surface. After people got hit, PBOT found a solution. A few weeks ago, Mayor Wheeler asked, asked a good question. He asked, why aren't we using speed humps to slow down dangerous roads? And then, then answered that ODOT jurisdiction would prevent that. But if you ask ODOT, which I have, they'll tell you it's a city-of-Portland rule, that we just don't allow speed humps on most of our major roads, regardless of the jurisdiction. People keep dying in crashes on Portland streets, 15 so far this year. Infrastructure isn't the only reason for that, but it's the factor that's most fully the city's responsibility, most directly under the city's control, and we still aren't doing as much as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Before you leave, I, I want to say a couple of things. First, I'm the Commissioner in charge of PBOT, so ultimately, I'm the administrator who has responsibility for our policies and how we implement them. I want to thank you for coming to testify about the importance of bike safety and infrastructure. I appreciate your analysis around relatively lightweight interventions to protect bike riders, things like plastic posts versus heavier barriers. I'll actually take a look at that. I have Jackson over here, who's on my team and facilitates, who facilitates a lot of our PBOT work, so we'll do that. And if you leave your contact information, I'll make sure, well, you and Jackson can talk, or I hope that you and Jackson can talk before you leave the building today, we can make sure that we can close out this conversation. And again, thanks for being here, and we invite you back anytime you want to share some perspectives on how to make the city better. Thank you. Thank you. And next, still on communications, I think we have 198, Sarah Hobbs. Welcome, Sarah.
Request of Sarah Hobbs to address council regarding follow-up care with melaxone pilot program.
For the record, my name is Sarah Hobbs, and my concern is not with the use of Narcan. It's a concern I have about the suboxone pilot project. The majority of the people who will need the care through that project, the way it was explained to the public is, if they are willing, they're taking the central city concern. You know, they get the initial injection of suboxone to help with that initial Narcan withdrawal, then they're taking the central city concern to be given a prescription they can take at home. Was there any consideration that home for a lot of those people is a doorway or a tent? The fact that they are extremely transient because of the situation they find themselves in. What was not made clear to me is who's going to do the follow-up? How is that follow-up going to be documented? How is the follow-up going to be done with an unhoused person who could be swept out of the location where they were initially contacted? And now, how do you find out where they've ended up? To put people back into the desperate situation, let me back up. A lot of unhoused people I know have dual diagnoses of mental illness and substance I agree, every life is important. Every life is worth saving. No argument on that point. But my concern is you can't keep putting people in desperate situations who many may be self-medicating mental illness and the stress of their homelessness back into the situation that's stressing them and causing them to use in the first place. And that's my concern. Not that I'm saying the program shouldn't be done, but I have heard nothing about follow-up. How's that going to happen? How's it going to happen if the person that's volunteered has fallen off the radar? And I am out of time. Thank you.
Sarah, thank you for your testimony. And Sarah, before you go, I see that Commissioner Gonzalez has his hand up. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Sure. Sarah, thanks for the testimony. Just to give you some stats, I get a daily update on our buprenorphine pilot. Yesterday, we had 27 after-care contacts. So that means after initial administration of buprenorphine or detox or Narcan, either chat or Portland Street Response has a follow-up contact with the recipients. That's exclusively on the streets of Portland. So there are extensive efforts to follow up. It is a transient population. It is extremely difficult population to track, but in some respects, we're the first city in the country to do the follow-up distribution of buprenorphine on the streets and not be entirely dependent on a clinical location. So there's been a lot of effort given to the follow-up care. It is a tough population to, to do it with. As a part of the 90-day emergency, we are evaluating accelerating transportation options for those. And just by way of background, when Portland Street Response or chat intervenes with someone on our streets, if we can connect them with shelter, they'll often be given a taxi voucher to shelter. That's still, we're still running into barriers because it's a heavily service-resistant population. And when Narcan's been administered, the last thing they want is a ride to the emergency room or a shelter often. They unfortunately want another blue pill. And so it's, it's a tough one for us right now, how to figure out that connection to the next rung in the services. So we're, we're looking at offering more direct transportation. There are some liability issues associated with it, but we're playing that through. Right now, the, at times, a taxi voucher has been successful, but we'd like to see higher rates of success in the next, next step in, in treatment and support. But there are extensive efforts going on here for the after-care. There's extensive thought given to it, and we're tracking metrics on it to see how it, how it evolves.
And I appreciate what you've said because I've been coming to city council meetings since Sam Adams was the mayor, and communication on the part of city council sometimes creates people like me come and going, what is going on? Because I'm like, oh, okay, Commissioner, with what you've just said, you've answered my concern. Had this communication been put out to the public beforehand, I wouldn't be here today.
Fair enough.
All right. Thank you.
Sarah, thank you so much for coming in today. Next, still on communications, we have item 199.
Request of Erica Montgomery to address council regarding ceasefire.
Is Erica in person or online?
Erica is online.
Hi, good morning. Don't start my three minutes yet because I am yielding my time to a Jolene Lopez and Emma Colburn. Dan, you are tiny in that chair. That's hilarious.
Everyday life in Portland is not separate from the horrible realities unfolding in Palestine. Whether we look at transglobal organizations with significant operations in both locations, such as intel data centers in Hillsborough and Haifa, or consider the flows of people and products, there is no meaningful distinction between over here and over there. Silence at this time is not neutrality, but tacit endorsement of U.S. support for Israel's bombing and ground invasion of Gaza and broader colonial agenda in Palestine. Settler colonial strategies are not new to us. We stand together against genocide of indigenous peoples now or then, here or there. Take a stand by signing a resolution for permanent ceasefire in Gaza and making diplomatic efforts towards lasting Palestinian liberation. We are also here today to read excerpts of an open letter signed by over 100 community members and sent to your five offices yesterday to dissent settler agendas in our own backyard, including the policy amendment, which we heard last Wednesday as the first step to replacing the toppled five monuments.
All right, so we have right to reiterate the concerns expressed to city council during the public comment portion of Wednesday, 2/28/2024, 2:00 PM session regarding policy 5.74.085, public monuments review criteria and the potential reinstillation of controversial monuments. One, do not put the toppled five back up without having a transparent community engagement process. Two, do not vote through this or any public policy on public monuments without engaging a transparent mechanism for hearing from diverse publics. As residents deeply invested in the well-being and equitable representation of all members of our community, we urge you to consider the implications that resurrecting figurative statuary to settler culture will have on the indigenous communities who live in and pass through our city. Replacing the toppled five risks perpetuating a narrative that disregards the lived experiences and perspectives of indigenous peoples. As a city that prides itself on its commitment to culture and equity, we cannot overlook the harm and ignorance that reinstating these statues may immortalize to the detriment of all people who reside in or pass through Portland. Please instead convene one to four transparent listening sessions with diverse community-based groups centering BIPOC communities and allies with follow-ups so that participants can track how their participation impacts policy. The transparent means we want to see who you are talking to and when. By actively engaging with marginalized communities and centering their voices in decision-making processes, we can work towards a more just, inclusive, and pertinent society for all. Such transparency will help to humanize the diversity of perspectives Portlanders hold about monuments, naming the individuals and organizations engaged in as an important part of what Mayor Wheeler mentioned in closing last one day's afternoon session. The mayor spoke evocatively about the need to ensure that Portland's monuments and what to do with them do not further divide the city. The council's role is to create a container where all the voices that make up Portland can come to the table and be heard. We must trust in the process of the philosophy of democracy, which, which states that the best ideas get polished through dissent. City council must not shy away from the differences and perspectives, rather, the council must create an equitable structure where all voices are heard at the same table. Thank you for considering this, this perspective as you define yours in preparation to vote on this policy amendment today in the council session. We look forward to seeing our city continue to prioritize the well-being and representation of all its residents.
Thank you for that testimony. Before you step away, Commissioner Ryan has his hand up.
Sure. Thank you for being here. We will address the concerns that you mentioned at the item when it comes up later in the meeting. Today's vote is about policy that we didn't have. It's not about decisions on putting back any monuments. That restorative process has an engagement process, and you can read about it and hear about it. It's in the policy that we stated, but also the actions taking place. And my lead staffer on this, Darian Jones, is in, in the room, and they're spending many, many hours making sure that it's an inclusive process.
So we did hear about it last week.
Let me finish. That's something that we do here, is let people, one at a time. We, we, we have a process that's going on. There is a fake website out there and a lot of misinformation, so it's just what we deal with when you do leadership in 2024. So thanks for being here, and we will address the item later in the meeting.
So I also just wanted to say, this is an art exhibit that Jeffrey Gibson did at the Art Museum, where they invited anyone from the community, it was a beautiful exhibit, to stand on the, where the, to replace the monument. This is our canoe family, Seven Waters Canoe Family, just wanted to show the beautiful exhibit, and just how that brought the whole community together, and we would just like to have that same with the process of...
Thank you.
And I didn't mean to talk over you. I just wanted the chance to respond because we were in the room last Wednesday when we were at the first read of the policy amendment document, and we heard from your office via your colleague, Darian Jones, that those monuments were already slated, at least three of them, to be replaced. And so... And so that's why we are here today, because there has not been a transparent policy or policy review process to talk to community about the replacement. And we understand that there are people, our fellow Portlanders on the other side of this issue, who want them replaced, and that is their right to have that opinion. The point that we're making is that it is your job as city council to create a container, as the mayor spoke eloquently about last week, where all of our voices are heard at the same table, so that the full spectrum of people who want them replaced and people who removed them through a community healing process in 2020 for reason and purpose can come together and sit at the same table and have an engagement strategy where all voices are heard.
Thank you. We do need to move on. But yes, we will have that restorative process. The key word is restorative, not replacement.
Folks, I appreciate this conversation. We have some other folks who hope to talk. Can we hear, I think our last communications item is item 200. Can we call that one?
Request of Mario Manstrangello to address council regarding responsibility for snow and ice removal.
Mario, is Mario in person or online?
They were scheduled to be in person.
Mario, is Mario in the room? I think I'm going, I think Mario is not here today. I invite Mario to reach out to us. I'll also say I'm commissioner in charge of P-Bots, if your ice, Mario, if your ice and snow concerns deal with roads or sidewalks, you might just want to reach out directly to me with, at my office, Mingus Maps, and we'll try to spark this conversation. Well, colleagues, I think that completes communications for the day. Why don't we go to our first-time certain?
Why is there a land acknowledgement?
Item number 201. Kealan, could we please read that one?
Proclaim March 11th, 2024 to be the 10th anniversary of Stephen Bias as music director of Portland Columbia Symphony.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioner Ryan, I believe this one is cosponsored by you and the mayor. We have a guest. Oh, great, excellent. Welcome, come on up.
Yeah, well, thank you, Council President Maps. It's my pleasure to introduce Kevin Irving, the executive director of the Portland Columbia Symphony. Kevin is here to give testimony supporting this proclamation honoring the 10-year anniversary of music director Stephen Bias. Kevin, welcome, and also Ann, welcome to the dais. The floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you. Mayor Wheeler, Commissioners Rubio, Maps, Gonzalez, and Commissioner Ryan, thank you for giving us this opportunity to address you this morning. As Commissioner Ryan said, I am the executive director of the Portland Columbia Symphony. As someone who previously held the position of artistic leader of a different arts nonprofit here in the Rose City, I believe I can speak to the very specific challenges that Stephen Bias has brilliantly met as music director of PCSO for 10 seasons. This is the reason we are here today and why we are grateful for your attention. Unfortunately, Mr. Bias himself is not able to join us live due to his conducting schedule, but he is watching virtually.
Great.
So the position of music director requires an enormous investment on the part of the person in that role. He or she must be responsive to the audience, mindful of the board's wishes and objectives, bound by some not insignificant budgetary parameters, be the leading edge and the driver of the organization's mission writ large, and must also be able to nurture the talent under his or her care. In other words, a music director has to answer to very many constituents, a situation you all might be familiar with. To do all that and to still have an artistic point of view, a motivating rationale for all decisions, is the mark of a great leader. And Portland Columbia Symphony has been so fortunate to have Stephen Bias as its artistic leader for the past 10 years. Maestro Bias has spoken passionately about his personal experience at the age of six of being introduced to a professional orchestra while on a class trip, which he described as an electric jolt into his young self. He has said that this moment in his early childhood planted a seed that took many years to flower. This experience, I think, is the template for how he has shaped the platform he has here at PCSO. His abiding mission is to illuminate the glorious and rich rewards of the live music experience for the outsider or the uninitiated. What I think is particularly noteworthy is the smoothly charming way that Stephen has in connecting ideas, insights, and facts regarding repertory selections to folks in the concert hall. I know from direct observation how this has impacted audiences from Gresham and Troutdale in East Multnomah County to the folks in Beaverton. Just think how many seeds of music appreciation Stephen Bias has planted over the past 10 years. Now, PCSO is not a large organization, but our impact on the greater arts ecosystem should not be overlooked. What our community gains from the long tenure of someone with Maestro Bias's talents reverberates beyond any one concert or even a series or season of concerts. In sum, the state and status of our fine orchestra is an excellent testament to Mr. Bias's formidable skills and leadership. I am happy that I can stand in front of you all today to assert that we, as a community, can be grateful to count Stephen Bias as one of our community's most treasured assets. Thank you, and I turn the floor to our board president, Ann Van Bever.
Good morning. I'm Ann Van Bever, and I'm currently serving as president of the Board of Portland Columbia Symphony Orchestra. My husband, Peter, and I have been active supporters of many arts organizations in Portland, serving on boards and giving money to at least nine performing arts groups, mostly in the areas of music and dance. We believe in the power of music to transform people, and we strongly support arts education as a way of nurturing well-rounded and open-minded youth. I'm also a musician myself, and I know from personal experience the value of the gift of music in my life. One of the groups that I care most passionately about is Portland Columbia Symphony, an organization I have been actively engaged with for more than 25 years. Although the PCSO has been around for more than 40 years, it is not as well-known as it deserves to be. One of the aims of my time on the board has been to get the message out to the larger community that we have a warm and welcoming experience to share with everyone. I'm here today on behalf of the board of directors, musicians, staff, and audience of the Portland Columbia Symphony to bring the city's attention to our outstanding music director, Stephen Bias, who is celebrating his 10th season with PCSO. Stephen has served the musical community of this area in many ways during his tenure. I'd like to take a moment to highlight some of his contributions. First and foremost, he has elevated the professionalism and musical quality of the PCSO to a very high level. We are proud of the performances we are able to offer to audiences in Portland, Gresham, and Beaverton. Also, Stephen has a way with words. His remarks from the podium are designed to inform and welcome our audience and to enrich the music that the orchestra performs. Audiences invariably tell us how his insights help them get more out of each concert. Stephen has also reached out to young people and to audiences who may not, excuse me, have been given the opportunity to hear classical orchestral music. He creates ways for all ages and backgrounds to access the music and feel a part of the cultural tradition of the Symphony Orchestra. The mission of the Portland Columbia Symphony is to cultivate and champion a diverse community of musicians and audiences. One way that Stephen has helped bring that to life is by highlighting music, by living and local composers, by showcasing women and underrepresented communities, and by inviting all kinds of listeners to discover and appreciate a broader range of orchestral music. Excuse me. Stephen Bias inspires us at every rehearsal, every concert, and every board meeting to do our very best to create one of the most important cultural institutions in the area, the Portland Columbia Symphony. We are grateful to him for his dedication and hard work, and we thank the council and the mayor for helping us celebrate him on March 11th. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to share Stephen with the entire community by giving him this well-deserved honor.
Colleagues, is that the end of the presentation?
Yeah, that is.
Well, actually, before you go, I just have a couple of words I want to say. First, I want to thank you so much for joining us today, and I also want to turn to my colleagues and say this, you know, I'm delighted to join you in celebrating Maestro Stephen Bias's 10th anniversary as music director for Portland Columbia Symphony. Maestro Bias has been described as, quote, "a dynamic and passionate conductor, masterful and brilliant, and a passionate advocate for the arts." Bias is known for his distinguished musicianship and innovative programming. And today, in addition to thanking Mr. Bias for his service to our community, I also want to take a moment to recognize and thank the Portland Columbia Symphony. The Portland Columbia Symphony, we heard about a little bit today, but for those of you who are not familiar with this bedrock organization, was founded back in 1982 and has emerged as a staple of Multnomah County's art scene. Now, every year, the symphony brings together 62 musicians who perform classical music and conduct educational events for the Portland metro area. I am told that Portland Columbia Symphony concerts are affordable, comfortable, and welcoming. This symphony has two concert series, I believe, coming up this spring, if I have that right.
Do we do?
Well, here, actually, instead of me read, can you tell us about them? I think we have one coming up on March 16th and 17th. What's that one about?
March 16th and 17th, the concert is called "In the Realm of Nature: Inspired by the Natural World Around Us," and this is one of the best examples of Maestro Bias's approach to how he curates as an artist music related to themes that resonate with our community, specifically here in the Pacific Northwest, to also connect the work of Beethoven, one of his most beloved works is the Pastoral, Symphony Number Six, but with a new work written by American composer Sarah Graef, based on or inspired by the Yakona Preserve out near Newport. So, you know, the connection of tradition with innovation and taking the idea of what a symphony is and trying to make it more responsive to the community is brilliantly realized in this program. We're at the Rieser in Beaverton on the 16th and at Gresham High School on March 17th. And then I'll just keep going.
Yeah, keep going.
May 4th and 5th, we are celebrating the Latino community with a program called Adelante, Adelante Voices of the Future, and that will help us unite with the Bravo program. I don't know if you're familiar with Bravo. Bravo Youth Orchestra is based on El Sistema, which is a way of connecting under-resourced youth with music. And we connect with them on a regular basis and send our artists to work with them, and some of their musicians will be joining the professional orchestra onstage. On the 4th, we're at First United Methodist Church here in Goose Hollow, and on the 5th, we're back at Gresham High School. Again, it's a program of all Latin and Latina-focused composers, including local composer Freddie Vilches, who has written a Latin American suite utilizing a plethora of percussion instruments from all over South America.
Oh, my gosh. Well, I want to encourage all Portlanders to attend those concerts, and I want to encourage all Portlanders to join this council in thanking Maestro Stephen Bias for his decade of service to the Portland arts community. And I see my colleagues have some thoughts they want to share too, so why don't we go to Commissioner Rubio?
Thank you. I would love to recognize Maestro Bias for his music and especially for his passion for music education. He instills in all those who come into contact with him, and from what I've learned about in his work, a devotion to promoting lifelong love and enthusiasm for music and arts. And it's been said that if you don't see the change, to be the change, right? And in that way, the maestro has become a huge advocate for classical works composed by women and members of the BIPOC and LGBTQ communities. And whether he's waving his baton in front of a captivated audience at Carnegie Hall or 88 million fans at the Super Bowl, like he did in 2000, or the 60-plus members of the Portland Columbia Symphony, Maestro Bias is an arts champion of the highest order. So we're so incredibly lucky to have him as a part of our community, and for all he's done and for our city and for the arts, we say, bravo, maestro.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Just want to thank Commissioner Ryan for allowing us to recognize Stephen for his contributions to our city. Portland's Columbia Symphony Orchestra is just one piece for our city's extensive, impressive arts and music scene and a central part to revitalizing and reigniting our city. I am continuously impressed by the amount of people committed to keeping music and the arts as a central piece of our city's story, our city's identity, and just to keep it playing. Stephen's stewardship of this program has inspired so many in producing countless people to the magic of the arts and truly enriching the lives of the symphony and orchestra performers and attendees. Thank you, Stephen, for your work these 10 years. We are grateful for all you do to enrich our community. We are a better city for your contributions, and here's to another 10 years of contribution. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez. And I see the mayor has his hand up, although he's muted.
There we go. Yeah, thank you, colleagues. Today, we're honoring a truly remarkable milestone in Portland's cultural landscape. Congratulations to Maestro Stephen Bias on his 10th anniversary as the leader of the Portland Columbia Symphony Orchestra. As you have all noted, Stephen's dedication extends well beyond the concert hall. His work has made classical music more approachable and inclusive, reaching out to youth in diverse communities, enriching our city's cultural tapestry. His commitment to featuring works by underrepresented artists is also key to the work that he does, and it's highly commendable. And I know at some point Commissioner Ryan will read most of the proclamation, so I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you so much, mayor. Thank you, Kevin. You sure know how to plug and play when you get the podium to talk about upcoming performances. That was really persuasive. And Ann, thank you so much for your volunteer leadership. And now to the honoree, Stephen Bias. I hope you are enjoying this playback, and thank you for sharing your gift of classical music with this community. We're really fortunate that you've been in Portland for 10 years and your youth, and definitely connecting with youth across country. I knew about you when I was doing a research about the connection between arts and education for math and science. There's so much good research on that, but you've really done an excellent job of pairing the connection between music education and then excelling in math and fostering in basically an inclusive space when you come to your concerts. I always said serious music leaders can't take themselves too seriously, or the door will not open to new generations. So thank you for walking that talk. The city is very grateful for your creative spirit, your dedication to service, and for just being you. So here's the proclamation. Whereas Stephen Bias is celebrating 10th season of Music Direction Portland Columbia Symphony Orchestra. Whereas over these 10 seasons, he has elevated the performance of this orchestra, enhancing the quality and making it into a great orchestra it is today. And whereas Stephen has tirelessly worked with the orchestra to bring classical music of the highest caliber to audiences in Portland, Beaverton, Gresham, and whereas Stephen, through his remarks from the stage, has sought to welcome audiences, offer them an entree into the pieces performed, enrich their understanding and enjoyment of classical music. And whereas Stephen has, through his community outreach to youth and other organizations in the greater Portland area, introduced classical music to a broader audience demographic and made it more accessible to all through targeted performing, programming, and ticket donations. And whereas Stephen has made it his personal mission to enrich the community through performances of classical music, both composed by and featuring underrepresented female, BIPOC, LGBTQIA2+ musicians, and whereas Stephen Bias has been an inspirational leader to the Portland Columbia Symphony Orchestra, administrators, and board, as well as the organization as a whole. Now...
Now, I Ted Wheeler, mayor of the city of Portland, Oregon, the city of roses, do hereby proclaim March 11th, 2024 to be the 10th anniversary of Stephen Bias as music director of the Portland Columbia Symphony in Portland and encourage... Portland, and encourage all residents to observe this day.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner Ryan for bringing this item forward. And I want to thank our guests for being here today. Next, can we go to the consent agenda? Kealan, have any items been polled?
No.
All right, let's vote on the consent agenda. And first, but before we do vote, I want to extend my apologies to staff who've been waiting for this vote. I probably should have read this a little bit earlier in the day. We appreciate you. But let's vote on this so you can get on with the rest of your workday.
Rubio?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mapps?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye.
And the consent agenda passes. Great. Thank you so much, colleagues. Next, we will go to item 206, which is also a proclamation.
Proclaim March 11th, 2024 to be National 3-1-1 Day.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, do you want to kick us off on this one?
Yeah, I have a pretty minimal role on this one. This item's presentation is going to be done by Michelle Kunit North, the 3-1-1 Program Manager. Welcome, Michelle, and thanks for all the great work you do.
Thank you. Welcome, Michelle.
Thank you. I have a presentation I'd like to share as well, so I'll get that running.
Okay.
All right. Good morning. My name's Michelle Kunit North. I'm the 3-1-1 Program Manager. And I am honored to have the opportunity to represent the incredible 3-1-1 team here with you today. I want to thank council and the mayor for recognizing 3-1-1 as a valuable asset to the community and for providing the vision and support that's gotten this program off the ground. March 11th serves as an annual opportunity to highlight the significance of 3-1-1 programs as a resource for communities across the country who are trying to connect with their city, county, and local non emergency services. Nationally, 3-1-1 systems exist in many metropolitan areas, Boston, San Francisco, Denver, and now here in Portland. These programs all have varied services, but really kind of core to their operations is a simple, easy to remember number, 3-1-1, that you can call and use as a first point of contact for your local government. So we're excited to encourage community members here today to call 3-1-1 for quick and easy access to both your city and county government. And I also want to take this opportunity to acknowledge the efforts of our customer service representatives. They're really kind of that first point of contact, that friendly voice you'll be talking to when you call our center. Our vision as a 3-1-1 program is that community members can easily and effectively access their local government, its information, and the services and programs it provides, regardless of language, ability, or resources. And we were created as a program by council in 2019. We really started with our first year, fiscal year 2020, 2021, after a two-year collaborative planning process that engaged both partners across the city and county and community members. The program formally launched to the community in 2022. And over the past three and a half years, we've been really focused on expanding our services and staff, thanks to council's support for a multi-year implementation plan. We are now kind of in a continuous state of operation, continuing to expand and continuing to outreach to the community to let them know we're here. So today, 3-1-1 provides community members with multiple ways to contact us. You can call us by phone using 3-1-1 or our 10-digit number 503-823-4000, 711 through the Oregon Relay Service. You can also email us, visit us online at the city's website. We're here seven days a week from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And we do have staff who speak many languages and can bring on interpretation services if community members choose to speak a language other than English. We have a team of 26 friendly and knowledgeable customer service representatives who are here to provide a wide variety of community needs. They're really the backbone and the most valuable asset we have. And over, over these past few years, we've really expanded the services that we offer. So just want to let you know, community members can call 3-1-1 for a wide variety of needs, to report common concerns, graffiti, noise, abandoned vehicles, to report maintenance issues in parks or on roads, to understand parking rules downtown, or even for help if they've moved and need to identify their electrical, gas, or trash providers. We're also now the centralized point of contact for ADA accommodation requests and discrimination reports. And this critical work helps ensure fair and equitable access to our government and the services it provides. We also just want to point out that community members can often call 3-1-1 instead of the public safety non emergency lines, so that's 823-3333, to report many common non emergency issues, abandoned vehicles, graffiti, campsites, noise, tree hazards, or even if they have questions on how to report a crime online. And calling us helps ensure that the call takers over at BoAC, the Bureau of Emergency Communications, can focus on 911 calls. We get over 1,000 calls transferred from the non emergency line every month, and thousands more of folks who call us directly. We're also working to position 3-1-1 to better support the community, our public works bureaus, first responders, emergencies. So just as an example, we took over 300 calls in one day during the ice storm related to tree hazards alone. And so by us taking those calls, we're able to help other bureaus really focus on the critical work of getting out there and getting our city running again. In addition, 3-1-1 is leading citywide initiatives to modernize our digital customer service, working closely with partners across the city and with the Bureau of Technology Services to replace TrackIt, the city's current web form tool, with a comprehensive suite of customer service management tools. This work is making it easier for community members to report issues, request services, and apply for programs online. And it's also giving bureaus backend tools they need to efficiently route, prioritize, and respond to reports and requests. This is resulting in better, more comprehensive, and centralized information that can help our city work more efficiently. And you can see this work in the city's new Report a Campsite, Report Trash, Report Graffiti forms, as well as the forms that allow community members to request an ADA accommodation or assistance from a city street outreach worker, or even to apply for the downtown business incentive. As a result of expanding our staff hours and services, 3-1-1 assisted the community over 168,000 times in 2023. That's more than double the amount of contacts the former Information and Referral Program handled in the year before we started. Nearly all calls, so 85 to 90%, are answered in 25 seconds or less by a real person. And 3-1-1 is now able to help community members when they first contact us more and more. So last year, 2/3 of folks were assisted on that first contact. And these are just metrics that we're using to try to measure our impact. But what matters most is our team's ability to serve as a trusted resource for community members. So I just want to call out this comment here at the bottom, we received from a community member. Lisa, one of our staff members, was kind, respectful, and listened to what I had to say, which is so important. I really appreciate her very much. Over the next year, we're going to continue working to expand our services, helping the transition team to support community members as we go through the changes coming to Portland's government, working with new city council offices to help them support community members, launching new forms to report maintenance issues in parks and on roads, apply for temporary street use permits, and more, and supporting response to urgent right of way issues by integrating with our partners in maintenance operations dispatch team. And finally, we've been working really hard to get word out to Portlanders and residents of Multnomah County to let them know that 3-1-1 is here and ready for them. That includes dozens of community events, from Sunday Parkways to Good in the Hood to Dia de los Muertos, advertising via Trimate, Univision, Spotify, and local newspapers, and on social media, public service announcements in partnership with 911, with KGW, K2, and Fox. And then we often mail out materials. You can actually request them online if you're a community member who's looking to share information with your networks, whether it's a community-based organization, a school, a church group, or even your local HOA. So I want to thank council for declaring 3-1-1 National 3-1-1 Day, sorry, March 11th, National 3-1-1 Day in Portland, and for your ongoing support of this program. And I want to take this opportunity to encourage all community members to call or email 3-1-1 if you have any questions or are trying to access your city government. Thank you.
Thank you. And before you go, I see some of my colleagues have their hands up. Commissioner Gonzalez, please take the floor.
Thank you. And I want to thank the mayor for allowing us to recognize all the hard work that 3-1-1 does connecting residents to resources every day in our city. As commissioner who oversees BoAC, the regional operator of 911 and non emergency calls, my Monday morning ritual is to review call volume, wait times, and dispatch times for our residents and emergency responders. Essential to managing 911 volume is a well-functioning 3-1-1 system, connecting residents with the help they need. When I was evaluating BoAC's metrics, a key objective I have is what, not only to bring down 911 wait time, but also for non emergency. Last summer, BoAC implemented an automated phone line to process non emergency calls so that call takers could focus on 911, the true life-threatening emergencies. What we found was a large percentage of our residents were calling the non emergency number 823-3333, were actually trying to connect with core city services offered through 3-1-1, roughly a third of that non emergency volume. So thank you for all your team is doing to offer extending customer service to Portlanders, reporting infrastructure improvement needs, trash cleanups, graffiti reports, and potential hazards before they become emergency. I appreciate all the hard work of you and your team connecting Portlanders to answers and solutions to their problems and alleviating the emergency system. Looking forward to continuing hearing about the great things 3-1-1 does, and happy to recognize your team today. Thank you.
Thank you. And we consider BoAC a critical partner, so appreciate your comments.
Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Council President Mapps. Michelle, it's so good to see you. Thanks for being here. Before I say a couple prepared remarks, because it's exciting to have you here for this proclamation, your slides were amazing. There was the one that showed basically the volume of calls, and then you showed when it peaked during the storm. Each week seemed to have a lower number. I don't want to assume. So is that, is that a weekend? Is that a Sunday or during the storm?
Yeah, we do. We are open seven days a week, but we do see lower call volumes on the weekends.
Okay, so most of the consistent drops were on a weekend?
Correct.
Okay. And then what about time of day? I know that you go to, is it 8 o'clock, you said?
Yep, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Is there, what patterns are you noticing about volume during the day?
We do tend to see higher volume during kind of traditional business hours, particularly early morning and during lunch. We do get a lot of traditional kind of lunchtime. We get a lot of calls.
But adding the evening hours, has that been helpful then?
Yes, we certainly continue to see calls through the evening, right up until 8:00 PM.
Yeah. When I was, when we were expanding it, I heard so many people, first of all, compliment 3-1-1. It's like when they found out 3-1-1 exists, it was a game changer for them. And they said, when you, when you added the hours, that was really helpful, when we gave you resources to add the hours, rather. Okay, so when people send in emails to you after hours, are those processed then early in the morning?
Yes, we do have people monitoring our email until 8:00 PM, and then it picks up again at 7:00 AM the next morning.
Great, great. So yeah, I just want to say that this really does fill a great need in our city. It's called customer service. I know I've talked a lot lately about how we have to keep improving our customer service and the delivery of services. And really, I think 3-1-1 is, models the behavior that a lot of our bureaus want to keep improving upon. What you hear from a lot of Portlanders is they just are so frustrated that they aren't heard or seen because they can't get through to anyone. So 3-1-1 is really filling that void. So just thank you to all of your staff, all 26, is that correct?
We have 30, 26, who provide customer service.
Okay, so all of them, all of them, beyond the 26 who are on the phones, I assume, for all of the work that they do. I would just say that you really are changing how people are seeing Portland's customer service. And so we really are dependent upon you. And it was so great to hear the dialogue between you and Commissioner Gonzalez. And I just want to say happy 3-1-1 Day. How convenient that you have a holiday that's basically on the calendar. So, yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. And I see the mayor has his hand up. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, and I just want to also underscore something. I want to again thank 3-1-1, and I want to thank them for continued innovation. There's something really cool that happened just a couple of weeks ago. They launched the Street Outreach Request Form where people can call for, it's also available to unsheltered or homeless community members to self-refer themselves. But what it basically does is immediately connects people with the city's street outreach workers. And so it gives us an opportunity to connect people and offer navigation support with housing and other needs. And this, this is something fairly new that, that has just been undertaken by 3-1-1. But I most certainly wanted to acknowledge that before we got to the proclamation.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Rubio?
Thank you. I want to thank Mayor Wheeler and the dedicated team at 3-1-1 for lifting up this important program today. Proclaiming this day is an important and easy way to remember about this service and invite citizens to be the eyes and ears and caring partner to the city. And these three but little vitally important digits, 3-1-1, can connect you to your local government and elected officials, from reporting basic issues to reaching any of us in our offices. And that's, that's important for the public to have that access. I also want to commend the 3-1-1 staff and system for their ability to help those who may not speak English. And many of the call takers are bilingual and speak Spanish, Japanese, Romanian, and Tagalog. And also, if there's other needs for outside languages, that 3-1-1 helps connect to these populations. And that's, again, critically important. So I just want to say again, thank you to the team, and thanks for all the hard but necessary work to build the strong scaffolding and foundation for the program, and for your dedicated service and continued expansion of this critical work.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Rubio, for those comments. I also want to underscore and share all the praise that my colleagues have heaped upon 3-1-1 for the vital services that they offer our city. About a year, three months ago, I used to have, be the commissioner in charge of emergency communications. So I am keenly aware of the important role that 3-1-1 plays in helping get, helping Portlanders access the critical services they need when they need it. You guys are doing a great job. I also have to say, I've been around, working in government here in Portland for long enough that I have seen the evolution from information and referral to the amazing program that 3-1-1 is today. I'm so proud of what you folks have been able to accomplish. And today, I have the great honor of reading this proclamation. So I'll read most of it. The mayor will chime in at the end, and I believe read the last paragraph or so. So let me start with this. Whereas National 3-1-1 Day occurring on March 11th serves as an annual reminder highlighting the significance of 3-1-1 as a resource for communities nationwide to connect with their city, county, and non emergency services. And whereas Portland City Council recognized community members deserve easy and effective access to city and county information services, regardless of language, ability, or resources. And whereas the creation of PDX 3-1-1 and its launch in 2020 And whereas the creation of PDX 3-1-1 and its launch in 2022 empowered community members to contact their government to get accurate answers quickly and easily and feel confident that their needs and voices are being heard and considered. And whereas PDX 3-1-1 has expanded the variety of customer service it provides, so community members only have to call one number to ask a question, report a problem, or request a service. And whereas, community members can call 3-1-1 to help assist with a variety of needs and concerns, from reporting a tree hazard and connecting with elected officials to requesting assistance from a city outreach worker. And whereas, the 3-1-1 system helps ease pressure on the 911 system by providing a single non-emergency number for community members in Multnomah County. And whereas, PDX 3-1-1 serves as the centralized intake point for requests related to the Americans with Disabilities Act, ensuring access and compliance with federal regulations concerning access and discrimination reports. And whereas, PDX 3-1-1 has markedly enhanced the community's access to city services and programs by offering assistance by phone, email, and in person at the Portland Building, and extending operational hours to seven days a week from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And whereas, a result of improved access and expanded services, PDX 3-1-1 assisted nearly 170,000 community members in 2023, a 24% increase over 2022. And whereas, the ongoing efforts of PDX 3-1-1 have improved workflows for city staff by streamlining requested processes, reducing bureaucratic hurdles, and collecting comprehensive data, enabling more efficient and effective services.
Now therefore, I Ted Wheeler, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the City of Roses, do hereby proclaim March 11th, 2024, to be National 3-1-1 Day in Portland, and encourage all residents to call 3-1-1 for help accessing local government services, requests, and reports. Thank you so much for your great work, Michelle, and you and all of your colleagues.
Again, thank you, Michelle. Thanks to 3-1-1, very important services. I encourage everyone to write that up on your refrigerator, so when you're wondering who to call when you need something from the City of Portland, you know who to reach out to. Thank you very much. Why don't we move on to item 207, please?
Accept bid of Brown Contracting Incorporated for the southeast 155th Avenue and Main Street, Millmain Drive Local Improvement District for $1,586,024.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to kick this one over to you, Earl.
Yeah, this local improvement district, or LID, will better integrate the planned Park Lane Park Street frontage improvements with two of Portland's Bureau of Transportation's projects that are moving into construction. The LID will create a new cul-de-sac to improve routine and emergency access, remove and replace curbs to shorten crossing distances for pedestrians, and improve separation for bicyclists from the roadway amongst other improvements. We have interim chief procurement officer Kathleen Brennis Marua here to present the item today, I believe.
Yes.
Great.
Kathleen, take it away.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, I am Kathleen Brennis Marua, interim chief procurement officer, and I'm here to recommend authorization to enter into a contract with Brown Contracting Incorporated for the southeast 155th Avenue and Main Street, Millmain Drive Local Improvement District project. City Council approved ordinance number 190792 on April 27th of 2022. The engineer's estimate for this project was $1,842,822, and the confidence level was low. Procurement Services issued the invitation to bid on December 13, 2023, and eight bids were received on January 23rd of 2024. Brown Contracting Incorporated submitted the lowest responsive bid in the amount of $1,586,024, which is approximately 14% under the estimate. The city's aspirational 20% subcontractor and supplier utilization goal applied. Brown Contracting has committed to subcontract 20% to contractors certified by the state's certification office for business inclusion and diversity, as identified in the report before you. Brown Contracting is self-performing approximately 66% of the work. Brown Contracting Incorporated is located in Eugene, Oregon. They are in full compliance with all city contracting requirements, and I recommend that you accept this report and authorize execution of the contract. If you have any questions about the project, Mimi Phillips, P-BOT's project manager, is here and can address those questions.
Great. Colleagues, any questions or concerns about this one? Hearing none. This is for reports, so Kealan, can we call the roll? Or is there public testimony on this?
There is not.
Okay. No public testimony. My colleagues do not seem to have any questions, so why don't we call the roll?
Oh, and then it is a report, so we'll want to ask someone to make a motion.
I'll move to accept.
Gonzalez moves, the mayor seconds, and now, why don't we call the vote?
Rubio?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
I'm going to vote aye on this one. Actually, I remember this project. It's a great one. I think I saw Andrew Abbey on the line a second ago. Want to thank him. He does amazing work in this space. Kathleen, it's great to see you back on the screen. We appreciate you stepping up today. I vote aye. This item passes. Kealan, can you please read 208?
I haven't gotten my vote yet.
Oh, I apologize, Mr. Mayor.
There won't be, there won't be too much suspense. I vote aye.
All right, good job. I'm still getting used to the gavel. Appreciate that. Mr. Kealan, could we go to 208?
Sure. Pay settlement of Robert Gleason bodily injury lawsuit for $60,000 involving the Portland Bureau of Transportation.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to introduce this one?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and kick it off. This ordinance results a lawsuit that was filed against the city in December of 2022. We have deputy city attorney Anne Milligan, as well as senior claims analyst Rose Radlic here to walk us through the ordinance. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Good morning. My name is Anne Milligan. I'm a senior deputy city attorney with the City Attorney's Office. On Christmas Eve in 2020, plaintiff Robert Gleason was riding his e-bike downhill on southwest Vacuna when, according to his complaint, which was filed December 2022, he hit a small dip in the road and lost control of his bike, going over his handlebars and landing on the asphalt, incurring over $80,000 in medical damages. City had no notice or complaints about that depression in the road prior to plaintiff serving a tort claim notice on the city. The road was a designated city bikeway with a relatively high pavement condition index score, meaning that the road was in good condition. Plaintiff's lawsuit sought $1.9 million in damages. The parties engaged in mediation, and both parties agreed to settle the lawsuit for $60,000. Risk management and the City Attorney's Office recommend that the settlement be approved to avoid the uncertainty and costs of further litigation, and I'm happy to answer any other questions at this time.
Colleagues, any questions? Kealan, do we have any public testimony on this?
Yes, we have one person signed up. Sangha Mavaklin is joining us online.
Okay, welcome. Are they actually here?
Yes. Sangha, you're muted. Go ahead, can you hear us? Sangha? Looks like they might be having audio issues.
Hi, we can hear you loud and clear.
Hey, Sangha, go ahead and unmute again.
Can you hear me?
There we go.
Yes. Sangha, are you there? We can't hear you right now if we're speaking.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
No, I cannot. I barely can hear. Can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, my name is Demetria Hester Sangha Mavaklin, and I'm just here to say land acknowledgement, One Africa, One Nation, pay black people reparations, ceasefire in Gaza. I just want to talk about the safety of transportation, being a victim of the 2017 attack of Jeremy Christian, killing two people, and the African young ladies have never been paid. No one who was involved is living have ever had any kind of payment for the incidents that happened to black people. There's never a payment. Mr. Gonzalez, you had an incident with a black woman. Are you going to file a case against the city like Joanne Hardisty did against the police? Y'all sit here and make it seem like you care when all it is is scripts. Y'all are reading off of scripts. You're falling asleep, the mayor. You got up. You're eating on the phone. I mean, this is your community. Again, Mr. Gonzalez, this is the second time you get up. This is always the thing with you and the people that's supposed to be running the city. We call you the League of Evil Colonizers, because that's what you are. You sit and take our pat money, tax-paying money, and pat your pockets, and then lie to the community about, once again, what you're going to spend the money on. Here we are, when we know the characteristics of all of you. Wheeler, you're a white supremacist, pedophile, predator. Ryan, documented pedophile, documented white supremacist, all of you. Rubio?
I'm going to intervene here.
You're a woman cool colonizer. Then...
I'm going to intervene here. I think some of the statements that are making here, number one, are far removed from the settlement that's on the table, and number two, just represent unfounded ad hominem attacks. I really do invite you to come back and talk about the items at hand in a respectful manner, but a line was crossed right here. I don't like doing this, never done it before, but that went too far. Any other public testimony, Kealan?
That completes.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, colleagues. Any questions or comments before we vote? Hearing none, Kealan, please call the roll. Or Mr. Mayor, are you saying something?
Just one comment. And, you know, look, I realize the difficult bind the city is in. The bind that we're in is if the city goes in front of a jury, there's no telling how much liability a jury would stick on the city enterprise. Local government is very unpopular, and although we like to believe that people stick to the facts in our system of jurisprudence, I think we all know better. But I'm concerned that it seems like a lot of the settlements that we are engaged in are defensive settlements. Hey, it's not as much as we're going to end up paying if it goes in front of a jury that just wants to take it to the city. So, you know, I really don't know what the answer is here, except that there's a lot of smart attorneys out there who are keenly aware of the fact that the city more or less has to accept some degree of settlement and provide some degree of a payday. And I want to be very clear, I have a great deal of sympathy for Mr. Gleason. That is a horrific injury. I actually had a friend who is similarly injured. It took her the better part of a couple of years to recover after significant reconstructive surgery to her face, so it's no laughing matter. This is a serious deal. But my suspicion is that he's not going to see most of this. My suspicion is that his lawyers are going to see most of it. I mean, somebody can tell me I'm wrong, but that's, I'm just increasingly worried that we're walking towards sort of a scenario where people know the city is going to settle. You know, I don't know what to do about it personally, but I just want to say it's concerning to me.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Gonzalez?
I think just in response to Commissioner, I mean, Mayor Wheeler's point, I do wonder if executive session or work session based on our approach to settlement on liability claims might make some sense, that we can talk more broadly without, this does sound like a bad case and serious injuries, but I share the concern that maybe we need to test the courts a little bit more often than we currently are, just to recalibrate what our true exposure is on all of these. And again, that speaks less to this particular case, but just the pattern, we're perceived as a deep pocket, we're a target, and that's unfortunate because we have a lot of real things to pay for, including safer streets. But outside of this particular case, I think it might be an area we make some space to have a deeper and broader conversation.
And if I may chime in here, I don't want to speak to the case in front of us today, but the underlying concern that the mayor and Commissioner Gonzalez point out, I also share. I'll tell you, one of the things that I wish I had done more of during my time on council is spending time with our folks over at risk management to understand the value, the trade-offs that they are making. I have a certain sense of that coming out of the lawyers' offices, but maybe an executive session, maybe a work session, I think that it would probably behoove the city and future councils to have a richer conversation in that space. But back to the matter at hand, in terms of the settlement before us today, colleagues, any other questions or concerns? Hearing none. Kealan, could you please call the roll?
Rubio?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mapps?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. This item passes, and now we go to item 209. Kealan, could you please call that one? I'll read the title.
Amend public art code to establish public monuments policy and review criteria.
Colleagues, this is a second reading. Any other conversation we want to have on this one? Seeing none. Kealan, please call the roll.
Rubio?
I want to acknowledge the challenging work that Commissioner Ryan is undertaking to create a new process where one doesn't exist, and I'm going to support this today. I'd also like to share a few concerns and some hopes. First, I want to acknowledge and thank everyone who's weighed in over the last several days since this was first presented in council. I believe we all agree that we need a process by which to determine the fate of an existing monument, and the ordinance does this. What some people have expressed is concern about how we got here or learned about it too late to have the time to engage, and to some extent, I do agree. I wish more people had time to engage, understand, and respond to the actual proposals versus what might be misinformation or digest what this all means. I also want to appreciate that Commissioner Ryan for hearing my concerns, and we had a productive conversation about this. So while I would have wished there would be more time for these folks to help, who have just learned, I'm hopeful, because in those conversations, I've learned that there are plans in the next phase to deepen and expand this engagement. And in our conversation, Commissioner, we talked about among Native American community organizations like NEA and others who've requested more time. I know we're all eager for that dialogue to review our process by which someone or something becomes a monument in the first place, because it's this criteria and process that should be determining how we, as a community, discuss whether or not, if and how, existing monuments should remain. That grounding exercise with historian That grounding exercise with historians at the table is why I strongly believe that an academic institution or institutions are critical to this work and can present factual and complete historical context. And while it's, and why it's, it's why initially I recruited Lewis and Clark to this important work. I hope that going forward, that important grounding engagement in historical facts and what the most impacted communities, namely indigenous people, is part of what happens next, whether we're talking about these five toppled monuments or the policy and process by which we name new ones. So with that, I vote aye.
Ryan.
Yes. For nearly three months, my team and I have had discussions with each of your offices and the public integrating the feedback into this policy. And I want to thank Darian Jones for posting the draft of this policy as early as the 30th of January. I want to be clear today about what this policy is and what it isn't. This policy is about creating a public process for Portlanders to be able to engage with the city when they have a complaint, when they have a complaint about a monument or believe a monument should be removed. This policy does not decide which monument should be returned or not. At its core, this policy establishes a transparent and accessible platform for Portlanders to voice their concerns or opinions regarding city monuments. Again, this is not about predetermining the fate of any monument. The policy sets up a direct channel for the public to engage with one another, the city and the city arts program staff specifically for launching complaints related to monuments. The policy identifies the complaint criteria and the responsible parties for addressing these complaints. The policy also outlines the resolution methods for responding to a complaint. The most important thing to note about this policy is that it doesn't issue any verdicts on the future of any monument, nor does it advocate for the removal or reinstatement of any monuments. It creates a systemic approach for the public to express grievances about monuments and ensures the city has a structured method to respond. The policy we are deliberating on reflects nearly four years of dedicated effort by the city to address a very loud and clear call from Portlanders across all walks of life for a formal and public process for these monuments. And I want to thank you, Commissioner Rubio, for getting this started as I received this handoff at the beginning of last year. We cannot afford to remain idle for another four years. This policy represents a practical and necessary step in shaping public policy, process, and action. As city council, we must unequivocally denounce vandalism and criminal acts. However, this stance should not hinder open and constructive public discourse. We are not here to condone wrongdoing, but to foster a culture of dialogue and accountability. This policy is creating mechanisms for Portlanders to express their concerns and ensuring that the city has a responsible and accountable system to address these issues. This policy is restorative justice, and this entire process, although very messy, is necessary for the work of the city. Through adoption of this policy, this United City Council is creating a space necessary for advancing restorative justice in Portland. I am proud to cast my vote in favor of this public policy.
Gonzalez.
I appreciate Commissioner Ryan's leadership on this. I vote aye.
Naps.
I appreciate Commissioner Ryan's work on this item. I also share many of the concerns raised by Commissioner Rubio. It's my understanding that this is not the last time this council will address these issues. I believe an update of these items will come back to council, I think, in July. I hope between now and July, we can continue to have conversations amongst council and our colleagues in the public to make sure that we get this process right. But in the meantime, I vote aye.
Wheeler.
Yeah, I put a number of concerns on the table during testimony. I will reiterate them here. The proof is in the pudding on this one. It really depends how it's ultimately implemented. I'm going to give Commissioner Ryan the benefit of the doubt. He and his team have worked really hard on this. I vote aye.
Thank you. The item passes. Colleagues, I believe that, or let me ask Kealan. Kealan, I believe that wraps up our morning session. Is there anything else on the docket?
Nope, we're all done.
All right, colleagues, we are adjourned for the day. We will resume for our afternoon session at 2:00. Thank you so much.